It is April 27th at 7:01 PM. At this time, I am going to provide Edith Flores, our newest Commissioner, with her oath of office. Oh, you gotta press on the button. Okay, raise your hand.
I, Edith Flores, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you. Okay, and at this time, if we can have everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, since we've had a reorganization, reappointment of Commissioners, we need to elect a Chair and Vice Chair. So those present know, the Chair's responsibilities and powers are pretty much as follows. The Chair presides at all of the Planning Commission meetings, that would be that person's job, not my job. They work with staff on calling if there's any special meetings that they feel they need in accordance with the bylaws. They sign all the resolutions of resolutions that the Planning Commission passes. They see that actions of the Commission are properly taken, and then they also assist staff on occasion of items on the Planning Commission agenda. Duties of the Vice Chair are pretty much in absence of the Chair. Any Commissioner can serve as Chair or Vice Chair, and staff really strongly encourages anybody that's wanting to learn to, you know, step up and serve as one of those either positions. So at this point amongst conversation of yourselves, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission, first of all, elect a Chair for the Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate David Muse for Chair.
I second it.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Any opposed?
That's five zero.
I mean, four, two, no.
Okay, five zero.
So now that we have a Chair, we would take nominations and elect a Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
I would like to nominate Mario Masiel as Vice Chair.
Second.
Any objections? From the Commissioners. Seeing none?
Motion passes.
Mr. Masiel, you are now Vice Chair. Motion passes, five zero. And at this point, Amy, would you also do real call?
Commissioner Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Borquez?
Here.
Vice Chair Masiel?
Here.
Commissioner or Chair Muse?
Present. At this time, I would like to open public communication. Those who are interested in speaking on items that are not on the agenda item, please step forward. Please, at that point, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
There we go. I got it. Hey, I'm Ken Woods. I've been a 49-year resident and business owner in Baldwin Park. But let me tell you how it works. You receive a packet. It'll have details on plans of a project. You'll study them, and you may even go to the site and take a look. Then at the Commission meeting, Amy and her very capable staff will give you an overview of what's going on. Then the public may speak. Then the applicant may speak. Then you Commissioners, you probably discuss it, and then you vote. And you know what? This all means nothing, nothing. Whether you want to believe me or not, the three amigos on that City Council already know how it's gonna go. They've already voted. And they use their reasons being favors to friends, favors to business cronies, and those all-important developers, the ones that give them all the money. Like the nonprofit Rome, that project is gonna burden our city forever. You guys had voted that in, you had no idea the crap they were gonna pull, and they pulled it on us, all of us. And we're gonna suffer forever with that project. All of you had better start attending these City Council meetings. I don't see any of your faces there. Once in a while, once in a while, you better start attending every meeting. I've attended every meeting our group has for eight years. You've gotta know what's going on in our city, and you better find out before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Planning Commission, people that are here. My biggest complaint, and I already talked to one person, the City of Baldwin Park, City Council has already issued pamphlets to their council people about eminent domain. That means that you people here also will be involved in that. And I'm saying, why are you taking somebody's home, giving them $100,000, $300,000, or whatever you give them, and you give this corporation tax-free Baldwin Park? But that's okay. I'd rather take all that city people that own these homes, no matter where it is in Baldwin Park, take their property, go over to some rich corporation, hand them the property, and say, "You don't need to pay us any taxes. That's what you people and the City Council are doing." I don't have to point it out to you. You can just go right down here to Baldwin Park Boulevard, Buente. You can just go about anywhere in Baldwin Park, and that's what's happening. And you people up here and the City Council are pushing every chance you get. Why would a little city like this have to use eminent domain? You know why? Because they're greedy. Not because they wanna do the benefit of anybody, they're greedy. Think about it. Every time you go to a City Council meeting, those same three people are indebted in our city, not only a few million, by the time they get done, just some figures that show up, it'll be 80 million bucks. And then with this eminent domain, they're already processing again, it's gonna be more. So that means if you're a resident, which I hope you are, you're gonna pay a lot of taxes. I'm gonna die sooner or later, but you people got a long ways to go. Look all the money you're gonna pay somebody free, and you're gonna pay it to these corporations that make... I'll give you a good example. Look at the money they make year after year. How much does the city get? You know what? You ask the City Council, and they look at you, "Are you stupid? We're not gonna tell you how much we make." They want you to read 15,000 pages to find out and answer one. If you ask the Mayor, any of the council people, "Show me some figures," you know what they say? "Oh, well, we can't show you that." This is supposed to be a free country. Maybe it isn't. Maybe that's why they use eminent domain.
Your time is up.
Oh, I know, three minutes.
Just for the record, this body does not have authority over eminent domain. Such an issue will never come to you. That's only with the City Council.
What did you say, young man?
This body doesn't have authority over eminent domain. It will never come to this body for a vote.
John Rios, resident, 40 years, or 45, something like that, anyway. One of the things is what I've seen, I used to be a Commissioner too, for Parks and Rec. They kicked me out for the simple reason that I spicked up because I saw what was going on, okay? People that have been with the city, working for the city 20-some years, they think they own the city, just like the Mayor and some City Council persons. Their main goal is how can they line their pockets? Where I come from, we call those ratas, okay? People that take advantage of the power they have in the city, okay? And one of the things that myself and the group that I belong to, we are looking at stuff like that, okay? We are keeping an eye on anything that's not legal, and we're gonna keep on looking. We have found some things. We're talking to some lawyers what to do, okay? And another thing is that you guys up there, from my point of view, you guys are puppets, Sorry to say it, but that's the way we see it, okay?
Greg Tuttle, business owner. I'm happy and I'm unhappy to see some of the changes that were made in the Planning Commission. I think Amy's gonna be your leader, and she's a good leader, and she will give you good input. Listen to her. She will have the good information. She's been the long-term in this city and knows just about every street and avenue and what can be done. The thing is, is we all have disagreements with the Council. They filed a restraining order on me to shut me up, and they lost that in court, cost the city over $100,000 and some thousand dollars in attorney fees to fight it, which they're now going back to court and being sued for that. So they're losing the city a lot of money. Now, let's get back onto the Rome project over here. I have the documents, anytime anybody wants to see them, that shows that Rome will not pay a dime of money until it makes a profit. And when they came in here, they're not paying any building fees, they're not paying any kind of fees that go along with putting up this building until after it's done, and it has started to turn a profit. If it doesn't turn a profit, they don't pay the city a dime. And then the low-income housing rate that they used was miscalculated, and most of the people that thought they were gonna qualify for low-income housing isn't. Now they wanna go on eminent domain, Urban X and the Taco Place, which with talking with Cal awareness and a bunch of groups in Sacramento, this isn't gonna happen. It was just Robert DeForia came up with a thing because he had to, but it's not the law. He told only half-truth up there during the meeting, at the Council meeting.
Again, this body has nothing to do with that.
I'm not being interrupted when I'm talking, please.
Yes, point of order.
Thank you, I will...
Mr. President.
Give me my time.
May I make my point?
Point of order, go ahead.
Point of order is this body does not have authority over an eminent domain, therefore it's not within the subject-matter jurisdiction of this body.
I didn't say you guys had it, and you interrupt my speech. Wait till after I talk. Now then, in this Rome, the second phase is gonna come in. They're trying it by doing an eminent domain. You will be doing some of the planning and listening to the plans if this development should go that far, which we don't see it will. But we have to think of what's for the city, and these two people that own properties here on the corner, they're hoping to gain more business out of this because these people are moved in there, not a matter of getting them kicked out of the city. So I'd like to see, our city is moving forward with these CUPs and helping other, the small businesses, especially in automotive repair. We need to move forward with these kind of things. These people need this done in the city. They've been outlawed. Automobile repair shops have been outlawed. They're dirty businesses, according to Monica Garcia. And this thing here needs to be changed.
So your three minutes are up.
They are just as good as any of the other businesses in this town. And I appreciate not being interrupted anymore until afterwards.
Thank you. Are there any other? Seeing no further interest, I will now declare all communications closed. The next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the last minute, last meeting on January 27th. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review the minutes because at that point, there were only two who were actually present during that meeting. So at this point...
Mr. Chair, in order for everybody to vote, I will affirm that the minutes are true and correct, and that if you want to vote, even if you were not there, you can do so. That's the only way that we'll get a majority to approve this.
All right, thank you. At that point, I motion to accept the minutes from January 27th. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Do I have any objections? Seeing none, motion passes. Amy, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. I'm actually gonna hand over this presentation to Mother E. Castillo, who is one of our planning technicians at the city.
Hello, good evening. Honorable Chair, Commissioners, and members of the audience, the request before you is a request to consider a child daycare facility for a maximum of 13 children within an existing commercial shopping center in the mixed-use two-stone pursuant to Table 153.170.020 in the city's municipal code. The location is 13310 Ramona Boulevard, Unit M. Applicant, Jenny Ramos, case number CP834. The applicant, Jenny Ramos, is proposing a child daycare facility for a maximum of 13 children at a time. The existing multi-tenant is surrounded by single-family residential and multifamily residential and other compatible uses to the east of the property. The subject site is physically suitable for the land use being proposed, and that the overall size of the property is approximately 230111 square feet, and the leasing area is approximately 870 square feet. The surrounding uses adjacent to the proposed child daycare facility includes a sit-down restaurant, a fitness center, and other retail uses. Also, the general plan designation is mixed-use land use. This is an aerial view of the property. The subject site currently has a total of 108 parking spaces. However, only four parking spaces will be required per the City of Baldwin Park zoning ordinance. A child daycare facility only requires one parking space per employee, and the proposed child daycare facility will have two employees total plus one parking space for every eight children. Therefore, they will only need four parking spaces. So this is a floor plan and site plan. Right here, the play area is located towards the rear of the building and will be enclosed by a safety fence of no more than three feet. The applicant will also require to comply with the noise standards set forth in the sitting zoning ordinance, that is no more than 65 dBAs or the sound level, and any commercial zone from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. However, their proposed hours of operation for this child daycare facility are gonna be from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. This is a picture inside the Bring Your Own Charm Child Daycare Facility, that's the proposed name. They will have an open floor plan with designated areas for napping, so different activities, including napping, playing activities designed to create a learning environment for the children. And the play area, again, is located towards the rear, next to the kitchen area, or I should say, towards the refrigerator and table area, there's no kitchen here. And again, this is another picture here showing where the refrigerator's gonna go. There's not gonna be any, no foods will be cooked here, except for foods that are provided by the parents or snacks. Everything will be either kept in the refrigerator or warmed up here in this area. A condition of approval was set forth to prevent any food to be prepared at this location, and all children, again, must bring their own snacks that the parents are providing. And in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC1607 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving Conditional Use Permit for a Child Daycare Facility for a Maximum of 13 Children pursuant to Table 153.050.020 in the city's municipal code. Location 13310 Ramona Boulevard, Unit M." This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you very much. At this point, do any Commissioners have any questions to staff?
See, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Amy, can you tell us how many daycare facilities are currently in Baldwin Park?
In the last time we looked at it, which has been probably about nine months ago, and this includes home-child care, the state designates small-family daycare, large-family daycare. The last time I looked, which was, like I said, about nine months ago, I wanted to say there was maybe about a dozen? And that, those are the ones that are actually registered with the state. That does not include those that are, that we don't know about.
Thank you. Any other questions from Commission? All right, at this point, I will now open up public communication on this item. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. And again, you have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. You know, you guys show all this information, which is great. You don't show parking, you don't show restrooms, you don't show any safety facility, any safety reaction to anything. If a kid had a seizure or fell down and bumped his head where he needed ER, you have no information about any of this. I know you're supposed to have all this information, but the person, to me, the people that want this facility should be here to make sure us people outside understand that all these safety precautions that you so claimed are in here aren't up here. None of you have mentioned any of this safety precaution stuff. You don't show any, where are you gonna put a kid if he falls down and needs emergency request right away? You know, you're not supposed to pick him up, especially if he bumps his head over his arm or whatever. Where are you gonna move him, or what are you gonna do with the rest of the kids? You can just let them sit there and watch this person? You know, what if the person has a seizure? These kids are gonna get all scared, and there's no procedure anywhere in these, what you guys represented, or the people that gave you this video, or whatever. There's no representation of any safety, any safety precaution at all. I don't know who brought this up to you, or she developed it, or whatever, but you guys need a little more planning here than just, yeah, we'll give it to them or we won't give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we could go back a few slides.
Okay, are the applicants here?
Hi, my name is Henry Soltello. I'm a co-owner with Bring Your Own Daycare Center. I guess not shown in the pictures is the, everything is strapped down, so we made sure that, you know, all the cabinets and all the, you know, everything that's movable is safely strapped down. We do have a first aid kit that's located inside our restroom, and everybody that's in the staff will be CPR-trained as well as first aid-trained.
Is there anyone else interested in speaking on this item? Seeing no further interest, I will now close public communication on this item. At this point, do the Commissioners have any questions, again, in regards to this?
I just wanna state, this is, say for the record, that I passed by the facility today. Unfortunately, the owner wasn't available for me to actually view the site. From what I was able to view from the window, everything looks good so far. But I do have one particular concern, and I wanna put it into condition. When you first enter the premises, there is nothing to secure the kids inside, so I would recommend that they put some type of enclosure around the door, a counter of some sort for check-in of parents, and a door that's childproof for the kids inside not to be able to get out before you get to that front door.
Can the applicant address that?
Sure.
Can you please come up?
Can you address that issue?
Hi, my name is Jenny Ramos, and I am the owner of BYOC. Regarding that, we already have the door safety lock already, because we're barely starting to put everything together, and we have the gates, as what I think I told Madai that we're gonna put a safety gate to our kitchen area and to our play area. So we're just setting, setting everything up. We're not yet done with the, with the whole, what do you call this? The daycare setup, sorry. So we have that. We're gonna provide the gates, the safety lock for our doors, and we're actually gonna have the gates in the front, so even though we put, we opened the door in the front, the kids are gonna be secured because we're gonna have a gate. It's gonna be gated.
My next question to the applicant, are the cameras already installed for the facility? I saw that in one of the conditions. I just wanna make sure that that's up and running.
Yes, we have the camera and the alarm system already.
Thank you. No further questions. No further questions.
One question from me in regards to the staff. What's the distance of the fire station to this facility and the response time? Do we know?
I don't know what the response time is, but I think this is the area that the fire station up on Los Angeles Street responds to. And typically their response time is anywhere between five to six minutes at the most.
Okay. And all your staff will be CPR trained? Okay, thank you. Any more questions from the commissioners?
I'm just wondering, are they gonna, are you going to have a microwave there to give the kids warm food or? Okay. I just don't want kids having cold food every day.
Any other questions? Seeing none, at this time, I will now accept or take a motion for approval or denial.
A motion.
A second.
Motion for?
Resolution sixteen dash zero seven, is that correct? Yes, yeah.
We have a motion and a second, any objections? Seeing none, motion passes. And congratulations and again, good luck on your new adventure. Second item, Amy?
Honorable Chair, Commissioners, and members of the audience, Abraham Tejas, Associate Planner, representing planning staff. The case before you is a request for consideration of a conditional use permit for automobile repair and installation, including a spray booth for bodywork within the IC industrial commercial zone pursuant to Table one fifty-three point zero five zero point zero two zero in the City's Municipal Code. The location is one four eight one two through one four eight one eight Arrow Highway, the applicant SoCal LTC LLC, case number CP eight three three. The proposed automobile repair facility with paint and bodywork is compatible with surrounding operations to the west, south, and the east. Surrounding operations are typical industrial operations, and they include auto wrecking to the west and warehousing to the south and the east. The property being occupied is approximately thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight square feet and is, is improved with two buildings. The front building is proposed to be used as an office and the corrugated metal building at the rear, near the southwest corner, down at the bottom here, is proposed to be used for the auto repairs. This photo here is the front's office building. And then this is the, the existing metal building located on the southwest corner. All repairs and, all repair activities will be conducted within the existing corrugated metal building. Planning staff has added condition letter B to ensure that repair activities remain within the confines of the building. Conditions of approval have also been added to correspond to the applicant's intended operational characteristics and also to improve the existing site. Condition J restricts the building, the business to specific hours of operation that correspond to the applicant's proposed hours and that are also in compliance with the Municipal Code's special noise standards. Condition I in the resolution requires the applicant to remove and replace the corrugated sheet metal fence with a seven-foot-high concrete block wall to match the existing perimeter walls around the other sides of the property. Staff has reviewed the applicant, the application and operational characteristics and has determined that with the added conditions of approval, the proposed business will have no adverse impact to the adjacent properties or the community. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC sixteen zero dash zero five, entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park, Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Conditional Use Permit to Allow an Automobile Repair Facility, Including Bodywork Within the IC Industrial Commercial Zone pursuant to Section one five-three point zero five zero point zero two zero in the City's Municipal Code. Location one four eight one two dash or through one four eight one eight Arrow Highway, the applicant SoCal LTC LLC, case number CP eight three three." This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. At this point, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff at this time?
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Amy, along, with this area in question, have there been any issues with the neighboring auto body shops or some of the other businesses as far as chemicals or anything like that? Have there been any incidents along that stretch of highway?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, this facility indicates the conditional use permit for repair, including bodywork. Will there be any auto painting?
Yes, in the plans that we provided, there is a spray booth intended to be installed in the corrugated metal building. Didn't, it didn't include the floor plans, but it will be in this building here to the left as soon as, the applicant's actually proposing other doors on this, and the parking complies with a number of bay doors for this. And for the proposed bay doors, but to the left of this existing door, there will be another door that would lead into the spray booth that's proposed. It's AQMD spray booth.
So at this time, the spray booth is non-existent?
Right, they haven't had any permits issued because they need this entitlement first.
Has there been any spraying done prior to?
No, the, the property is currently occupied by a clay pipe business, so there's no spraying.
I have a question.
Sure.
How far are they from residential?
Um, see if I can. They're actually at the very north part adjacent, or south, just south of Arrow Highway. All, everything below that is industrial. So they're actually zoned industrial commercial, but below that, the adjacent property to the south is already industrial. Just I industrial. So it's, from what I'm aware of, it's quite a ways. They have the wrecking to the, to the west and surrounded by self-storage on the south and the east. So there's really no, no residential that I'm.
Thank you.
Currently, do you have an approximate, or do they have an approximate time for when the spray booth will be up and operational?
The applicant is here, he might be able to shed some light on that.
Okay, can, is the applicant here? Can you come forward, please?
Thank you, guys. So we actually were intent, in the process of acquiring this property, is currently occupied by a mission clay company. So we've already got the AQMD permit, but then their permits, it's just the, the, the condition is to get this CUP approved, then we can go to the city Building and Safety Department to submit the, the plan. Matter of fact, we've already have the manufacturer of the spray booth, contact with the city, the safety and building. But then before we can get this CUP approved, and they won't accept the application for how they're going to build the spray booth. So I've actually brought the AQMD approved future permit for it. It's just, we, we, we need to go through this process first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to open public communication. For anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item, you may step forward. You have three minutes. Seeing no interest, I now close public communication. Again, at this point, do any commissioners have any questions or concerns in regards to this agenda item? Seeing none, at this point, I will table a motion, or I will accept a motion to either accept or deny this agenda item?
A motion, move this forward.
It's PC sixteen dash zero five.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second, do we have any objections? Seeing no objections, motion passes. Amy, next agenda item, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience. This item that's before you is a request to amend the zoning code to allow automobile towing and accessory storage of vehicles within the IC industrial commercial zone. Since early, the early twenty, twenty fifteen, in several city council sessions, there's been discussion about amending the code to allow this type of use, provided that good, good development standards are included. However, it wasn't until recently that the city council directed staff to move forward with this code amendment. Depending, I mean, as you well know, this code amendment will impact all properties within the industrial commercial zone. And depending on the location within the IC zone, you know, this type of use could have a negative impact upon adjacent properties. Hence, staff is requiring that development standards be met prior to opening and conducting business. And those, those minimum development standards include, one, that a proposed automobile towing and storage business be a minimum of three thousand feet away from any other automobile towing and vehicular storage business. Two, that a conditional use permit be approved by the Planning Commission or the City Council on appeal in a public hearing similar to what we're doing tonight. And then three, that a decorative perimeter block wall be installed around the subject property where the vehicular towing and storage facility would be. These development standards would be in addition to any conditions of approval that staff and the Planning Commission recommend as part of the conditional use permit, and you've seen that here tonight with the other CUPs that we have. Typical conditions of approval that you see, you would see for this type of use, we've included on Table three, on page three. And those would be minimum amounts of landscaping required along the front for aesthetic purposes, hours of operation, you know, repair work being conducted within an enclosed building, compliance with national pollution elimination discharge requirement, which, you know, means you have to dispose of hazardous materials accordingly, no outside storage, and then also ongoing landscape maintenance, because you want to see live landscape, you don't want to see dead landscape. So, given with this, we believe that moving forward, that we can, that this would be a feasible way to amend and have the code. We do have currently three existing automobile towing and storage businesses within Baldwin Park. Those businesses can continue to operate. However, any newly proposed automobile towing and storage businesses would have to meet the most current zoning code requirements as adopted by the city council. So at this time, staff is recommending the Planning Commission open the public hearing and following the public hearing, adopt Resolution PC sixteen dash zero six, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park, Recommending the City Council Amend Table one five-three point zero five zero point zero two zero in the City's Municipal Code to Allow Automobile Towing and Accessory Vehicular Storage Businesses Within the IC Industrial Commercial Zone, Requiring a Conditional Use Permit, A Minimum Three Thousand Foot Distance Between Other Automobile Towing and Accessory Vehicular, Accessory Vehicular Storage Uses, And a Perimeter Decorative Block Wall." The location, this would impact all IC-zoned properties within the City of Baldwin Park. The applicant's the City of Baldwin Park and the case number is AZC one eighty-one, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions pertaining this item by any commissioners? Seeing none, at this point, I will now open public communication on this agenda item. Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item, please step forward and you have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. I know this has concerned the, the person, I mean, the item on the agenda, but there's no open restrooms?
I'm sorry?
Restrooms, bathrooms.
Right, those are, those are typically dictated by the building department?
No, I'm bathrooms, bathrooms, it's closed.
Oh yeah, no, they're closed, yeah.
There's not any here?
Next door, if they're open, yeah.
Next door, where, right here?
Arc, yeah, if they're open.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Sorry for the interruption.
Any other interest in regards to this agenda item? Seeing none, I now close public communication, again, on this agenda item.
Just, since this is, we have one new commissioner. Here, you're being asked to act in a legislative manner. Before, you were asked with respect to CUPs to act as a judge. Here, you're being asked to act as a legislator. And in this, you are recommending to the city council whether to make this zoning change or not. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. I have one quick question. Since with the, if this is passed, do the three current towing facilities meet the standards that we're proposing right now?
There are two that do not. We have Baldwin Auto Craft, which is on Ramona Boulevard, and then we also have Royal Coaches. Those two are within three thousand feet of each other. They do meet, if I recall correctly, the other requirements. They both have conditional use permits and they have block walls around their properties.
So currently, it's just the distance between the facilities?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, I will now accept a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion.
To approve PC sixteen dash zero six.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, do we have any objections? Seeing no objections, motion passes. Amy?
Thank you, Chair. I've included, the next item in your staff report or in your package was the reports of officers. I've included the Planning Division monthly reports for January, February, and March. If any of you had any questions about any of those, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I guess no one has any questions?
Nobody has any questions, okay. Moving on to council and staff communications. The next item on the agenda is a verbal update on the Vineland Residential Care Facility at thirty-five sixty-two through thirty-five seventy-six Vineland Avenue. The applicant did finally submit his parcel map to combine the two properties which encompass this site into one property, and we are currently moving through that process with the fire department and working with the applicant in order to meet the fire department requirements so that the fire department will clear the item for public hearing. So that will probably be coming forward to the commission within the next couple of months or so. The next item on the agenda is a verbal update on the proposed Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility Facility and Transfer Station. The City of Irwindale tonight was actually having a public hearing, their city council was having a public hearing on the final environmental impact report and the development agreement, or DDA disposition and development agreement. It's my understanding that the Irwindale City Council will be continuing the item. They will be taking limited testimony, public testimony tonight, and continuing the item to May 25th, which is the fourth Wednesday in May, which coincides with our Planning Commission meeting here. And so one of the things that I wanted to have discussion with the commission was, should you be so inclined to go or not? Staff was wondering about having a special meeting of the Planning Commission on the Tuesday, the 24th, so that that would then free up not only the Planning Commission, but also staff to be able to go to that meeting and attend that meeting to monitor what the Irwindale City Council is doing with the Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility and Transfer Station.
Do you need a response tonight?
I don't, but if you know, that would be great. If not, that's fine, too. And that would be if there's, if we have anything on an agenda. If I don't have anything to agendize, obviously, we wouldn't have a meeting, but if I do, then I'd like to be able to have that meeting on Tuesday, the 24th.
Understood, okay.
So get back to Amy, bye.
As soon as you can. If not, I'll text you, I'll reach out to you, so.
Let's say, okay, today.
And then the last thing I wanted to do was to introduce, Jose Mendez over there, Jose, raise your hand. He's assisting us in the planning department as a volunteer intern right now, and we are happy to have him.
Well, welcome aboard.
And that's all I have.
All right. In regards to the 24th, if the commissioners, and I know if we have anything, Amy will get in contact with us, but if the commissioners can get back to Amy by the end of next week, that'll give her plenty of time to be notified whether or not we'll be able to do the 24th. Is that okay with everybody?
I say go, on my behalf.
Okay. So we should be, we'll all have communications with you, Amy, by the 6th of May? Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other items? Seeing none. At this point, I will accept a motion.
A motion.
And do I have a second for adjournment?
Second.
Does anybody object? Seeing none, meaning is adjourned.